Good evening, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, September 16, 2020 is called to order. Welcome to the NII's virtual Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission meeting due to the impacts of COVID-19. The city is taking steps to ensure the health and safety of our community and our employees. As a result, attendance in person by members of the public will be prohibited. Instead, we have invited the public to submit comments via email and staff will read them during this meeting. In addition, this meeting is being livestreamed on Facebook, which is accessible for all members of the public, even if they do not have a Facebook account. The email address is publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov. That has been set up for the public to send in their comments for the meeting. Again, that's publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov. P-U-B-L-I-C-C-O-M-N-E-N-T-S at G-O-O-D-Y-A-R-A-Z dot G-O-V. I am monitoring this email and we will read any comments received for each item according to the three-minute limit. Commissioners, please mute your microphones and be aware of your video during the presentations to avoid interruptions. Any attendees other than the commissioners, including applicants, please turn off your videos to avoid any interruption or distraction to the public. All votes will be a roll call vote and I will call on each commissioner for any questions at the appropriate time during the hearing. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison is present, Commissioner Clymer is present, Commissioner Kish is present, Commissioner Steiner is present, Commissioner Maloney is present, Vice Chairman Barnes is present, Chairman Gray is present, we have a forum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, it looks like we have everybody with us tonight. Moving right along then to agenda item number one. This is the approval of the draft minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on August 6, 2020. Those are online and I will gladly entertain a motion from one of the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from August 26.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Kish, to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes from August 26, 2020. Is there any discussion?
No.
No. No. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, actually, Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison.
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer.
Aye.
Commissioner Kish.
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Barnes.
Aye.
Chairman Gray.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Other comments, now is the time for a citizen who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on agenda item. Will this be emails or can you need to be read?
Oh, yeah, log in.
Sorry, did you need me to, yes, sorry, cut out there for a second. Commissioner Ellison, oh, sorry, I've received one email, but it is for an item, so I do not have anything to add during this time.
Okay, thank you. Disclosure of ex parte communication, this is an opportunity for commissioner members to disclose any ex parte communication they may have had prior to this meeting. Alyssa, will you please go ahead and go through the roll on this one?
Yes. Commissioner Ellison.
No.
Commissioner Clymer.
No.
Commissioner Kish.
No.
Commissioner Steiner.
No.
Commissioner Maloney.
No.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Barnes.
No.
Chairman Gray.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to business items, agenda item number two is 20-500-00005. This is agenda item number two, is the preliminary plat of Goodyear Civic Square Parcel at Australia Falls. And the, this evening's presenter will be Steve, Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commission members, I am bringing up the presentation. Mr. Chairman, do you see the presentation?
Yes, I do.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. So tonight's item, well, the first item, preliminary plat for the Goodyear Civic Square. And this item is parcel A. It is located within the Goodyear Civic Square PAT. And that PAT is located between McDowell Road and Virginian and Canto, and between the Bullard Wash and 150th here. Parcel A, again, this is the parcel subject of tonight's plat. It's about almost 48 acres here located in between the Wash and 150th here. Pretty much surrounding this area, we have commercial uses, arc of Australia Falls, then we have regional center here to the east. To the north is parcel B Civic Square, and that is a mix of residential densities in this area here. Again, the Goodyear Civic Square PAT is approved just last year, July. Intent was to create urban pedestrian-oriented environment, and also a center for civic administration and services. And with that in mind, the intent is to subdivide that about 48 acres into eight lots. And those eight lots will be divi- with a mix of civic, commercial, and high-density residential uses. Those are the uses as established in the PAT. Right now, we have City Hall proposed on lot three. The civic park on lot four, and then the first phase office and parking garage, those are lots six and seven. And this is the eight lot pre-plat, and this is McDowell Road here and the Wash. And again, I'll point those out, lot three, we have City Hall for the park, and five, and six, and seven, we have the office building and the garage. The rest of the lots at this time, unsure of what exactly is going on these lots. But again, this is the eight lot pre-plat that is before you tonight. And looking at the pre-plat, we did find it consistent with the Goodyear Civic Square PAT. It is consistent with our subdivision regulations. Therefore, we are recommending approval of the pre-plat, a subject to those five stipulations that were in the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my part of the presentation. Staffs available for questions, applicants also available for questions.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate that. At this time, we'll ask, is there any questions for staff on this agenda item? Okay, hearing no questions, we will move in, over to the applicant, and I guess the applicant is with us. So, does the applicant wish to address the commission at this time?
No, no questions for us.
Does any of the commissioners have a question for the applicant?
No.
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 Okay. No.
Alyssa, do you have any emails or comments regarding this agenda item?
I've not received any emails or speaker card.
With that then, I guess we'll move right along and I'll ask for a motion from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass number 20-500-00005. Preliminary plat of Goodyear Civic Square Parcel at the Australia Falls.
Sorry, second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Maloney, seconded by Commissioner Barnes, to approve the preliminary plat of Goodyear Civic Square. Is there any discussion?
No.
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 All right, Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison.
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer.
Aye.
Commissioner Kish.
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Barnes.
Aye.
Chairman Gray.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is the preliminary plat for Australia Parcel 9.8. And Steve will be presenting on this one as well, Steve. The presentation is up, Steve.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This next item, Australia Parcel 92, preliminary plat. Pre-plat is located here, just kind of west of Willis Road, and west of Australia Parkway. It's about 20 acres within the Montecito at Australia PAT. Pretty much surrounding this area is residential character. You have various parcels within Australia developing, as well as Cantomea here to the east that is also developed. Parcel's located in a Montecito at Australia PAT. Initially approved in 2008, last amended in 2018. With that amendment, this parcel 9.28 was designated for single-family detached development with a minimum lot width of 50 feet. And so the intent tonight is to subdivide that 20.64 acres into 67 lots, tend to single-family detached homes. A typical lot size is about 50 feet wide by 115 feet deep. And within this subdivision, all of the streets will be public, built-to-city standards. And this is a layout of the subdivision. The numbered lots are parcel 9.28, and it kind of wraps around parcel 9.29 here, and then fronts here on Willis Road. It'll have two points of access to Willis here, 181st, and then up here, 179. It'll also have eventually, as parcel 9.30 develops, access through here, which will then take access up to the nearby residential center, just a little bit north of this parcel. So when reviewing this pre-plat, we do find it consistent with the Australia PAT. We do find it consistent with our subdivision regulations. Therefore, we are recommending approval, subject to the 11 stipulations that are in the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my part of the presentation, available for any questions.
Thank you, Steve, are there any questions for Steve at this time?
No.
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 Is the applicant on the phone, or does the applicant wish to address the commission? Guessing that's a no. So with that, if there is no further questions, Alyssa, do you have any speaker's cards on this particular issue?
Have not received any speaker cards or email.
Thank you, I will go ahead then and entertain a motion for agenda item number three, preliminary plat for Australia Parcel 9.28.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve 20-500-00009.
Second. Second.
It was, has been moved by Commissioner Steiner, seconded by Commissioner Ellison, to approve the preliminary plat for Australia Parcel 9.28. Is there any discussion?
No. Nope.
Madam Chairman, or Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison.
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer.
Aye.
Commissioner Kish.
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Barnes.
Aye.
Chairman Gray.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Onto agenda item number four, this is the rezoning from PAT and AG to PAT for the Innov- Innovation Center, and Steve, you're up again.
If you could open the public hearing.
Oh. Open the public hearing. Alyssa.
Mr. Chairman, this is Christopher, as Steve pulls that up. Just a point of information for the commission. After the public hearings is closed this evening, if the commission desires, and it is totally up to the commission to go into executive session to seek any legal advice, we do have the ability of going into executive session. That is a separate meeting, so we would actually, this meeting would continue, but we would pop out of this one and go into another one. And I believe Alyssa has already sent you all that link. But I just wanted to put that out there for you all, if that's something that you desire to do, it's totally your decision as a commission to do so, but we are prepared to do that in that, if that isn't something that needs to take place. So, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to make that point, thank you very much.
Thank you, Christopher, appreciate that. We'll continue with the presentation from Steve.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission member, so, Mr. Chairman, is the presentation visible?
It is.
Oh, good, thank you. Okay, so this next item, rezoning for PAT to be called Innovation Center. It is located on property at the southwest corner of Interstate 10 and the 303. It's about 224 acres. The general plan has a land use of business and commerce on that property. It's also within the I-10 transit corridor. And given those two designations, what the general plan is looking for is basically like high-intensity office, entertainment, hospitality, commercial-type uses on that property. Light industrial can also be appropriate per the general plan if buffered and sensitive to any surrounding residential uses. This is the subject property here. Here is I-10 with 303 wrapping around the east, it's about, again, 224 acres. Mostly, generally undeveloped, you did have the Trotter Park right here, this kind of central location before it was demolished. We also have a large borrow pit in the southwest corner about here. Surrounding the property, we have the existing Cotton Lane RV Resort to the south. We have canyon trails and proposed residential south of Van Buren. Kind of wrapping around, we have the Destiny RV Resort here, along Citrus, proposed Las Palmas Residential here, moving into some county lots. Just, and then kind of wrapping around again, we have a Canada Village and some vacant commercial parcel here with the state prison complexes north of McDowell Road. Property is currently zoned PAT, it's the Cotton Lane RV PAT. That's the yellow portion here on this exhibit here inside the red. The green are the agricultural zone portions. For the PAT, that was zoned in 1996. That plan had about a 1,500 residential sites and support commercial within it. North of the RID canal here, we do not have any residential development that occurred. South of the RID, we do have existing residential, about 530 spaces south of the canal. And this is exhibit taken from that 96 PAT. And here is Van Buren, and this shows the first phase where you do have some existing development here. The RID canal, and then it had other phases of development moving north to Interstate 10. And this boundary here, inside the red dash line, shows the 224 acres that are subject of this rezoning tonight. So the current request, take that 224 acres from PAT and agricultural to PAT, and again, that PAT to be called Innovation Center. It'll be a mix of commercial, light industrial uses. The PAT is proposing three land use districts. So, the largest is about 139 acres, that's District A. That's the commerce district that'll be based on the city's I-1 light industrial uses. And in looking at the exhibit on the slide, this, that's District A here. It's predominant use within the PAT, it's about 62% of the land area. The next district, District B, that's the commercial, retail, and entertainment district. It's here in the northwest corner, about 26 acres. Then the third district, it's a office and employment district. Again, based off the C2 general commercial, it's about almost 60 acres. So those are the three districts proposed within the PAT. And as you're looking, this is, this was a conceptual type of site plan provided in the PAT. Within the request, there are also a few deviations to city standards concerning building height, wanting to go up to a max of 150 feet, and also a couple deviations to the city's landscapes that's that. So when looking at any application sets forth the process for us, and sets for 10 evaluation criteria, which I know the commission has seen before, these 10 criteria within our staff reports. So again, I just wanted to list these, these are what staff looks at as we're looking at any kind of application for rezoning property. And then wanting to kind of jump to the recommendation, in looking at those 10 evaluation criteria that were on the previous slide, we are recommending denial of the request as we find it inconsistent with the general plan. The other evaluation criteria, we also find the light industrial is incompatible with the surrounding area. And so therefore, that's our recommendation for denial. However, Mr. Chairman, I did want to clarify that the general plan does support and encourage, like, the commercial, the office, the hospitality, the employment-type uses that are proposed in the PAT. The general plan also supports and encourages light industrial development in appropriate locations. And I think we all see that as we drive around the city, that the city's been very successful with industrial development with that sector. However, for this specific location, as specifically proposed in the PAT, the general plan would say that the light industrial is not appropriate, and therefore, the reason for our recommendation. And I just wanted to clarify that as we move forward here. So why is the proposed land use inconsistent with the general plan? Well, in looking at our location where we're at, we're along the I-10 corridor, which is a transit corridor and growth area as established in the general plan. This, this is a unique area of the city. There are not any, there is not any other area within the city like this where we have this opportunity for high employment uses, the office entertainment, the event venues, where we can have a mix of uses and destination uses that the general plan would say can leverage the visibility and access that are afforded by this location here along the transit corridor. With the, along the transit, I would say that's the area that's appropriate for higher intensities and higher building heights, because again, they can take advantage of the visibility and access provided within the corridor. On the other hand, warehousing and distribution and manufacturing, which the PAT is predominantly proposing, the general plan would say those types of uses are appropriate, but in other areas. And a couple areas I'd like to focus on are the 303 up here. Again, this is an appropriate area for industrial, for the protection, especially for the protection of Luke Air Force Base. Another area is also by the Phoenix Goodyear Airport and along MC-85 and the I-10 reliever. Again, the general plan points out those areas is appropriate for, to warehousing, or distribution, and manufacturing. What it would like to do though is preserve this I-10 corridor for those areas where we can have the high employment uses, the office, the entertainment. So the general plan would like to reserve this area for those type of uses. The city's also, we had a market analysis conducted, and this was just last year, looking at this property and industrial properties within the city. And one of the conclusions of the study was that the city had a very adequate supply of industrial land. As you can see on this exhibit, the yellow is undeveloped industrial land, and this area I'm highlighting right here, each square, it looks small on the map, but that's a square mile. So you can see all of the yellow that remains of down this map that is available industrial land. And so moving along through the valuation criteria, suitability, just want to touch on that we did talk about the borrow pit. That is something that we would like to address through stipulations and require a special use permit for that remediation. Again, that would be needed if any development were to occur on-site, we would need to take care of that borrow pit for safety and general welfare purposes. And again, we would tie activities and schedules of remediation efforts to this SUP. And then compatibility, I did mention that we did find the proposed light industrial was incompatible with the surrounding area. In explaining that, the general plan has the subject property as business and commerce. Just to the south though, across the RID, the general plan has this as neighborhoods. So we have an existing residential development already there. The general plan would say though, that this area is long-term residential. So we have to be aware of that, be sensitive to that with any development that occurs to the north. We would need to have appropriate buffering and development controls incorporated into any development plan. What we see with the PAT though is large warehousing, distribution, manufacturing buildings that could go in this area right here, just to the north of that residential development. You're looking at buildings with excessive height and bulk. You're looking at the potential for dock doors and loading areas and truck maneuverage areas just to the north of an existing residential area. So what you have is opportunities for noise with the trucks, with loading and unloading activities, especially with the dock doors right there. And also at night, you have opportunities for light trespass, as a lot of those uses are going to need high-intensity type of lighting. So we have to be aware of that with this residential area. What I'd like to go over is a couple examples. We do have areas in the city where we do have industrial and residential in close proximity. We do have areas in the city where we do have industrial and residential in close proximity. And I know the commission's familiar with these, the P V three oh three and the compass data centers. I'd like to just go over those real quick. And this is the area I'd like to highlight, the P V three oh three area just south of Camelback, east of Pebble Creek Parkway. North of the Palm Valley Phase Five subdivision. And so on this drawing, we have the subdivision to the left, then we have the future industrial development here to the right. And when this property was rezoned to industrial. The city and developer knew that the residential development was there, so they knew to be sensitive to it. So what they incorporated was a three hundred foot buffer north of Charles Boulevard. And within that buffer, max height of buildings was limited to forty feet. There was also a limitation on uses there, there would be no warehousing, distribution or manufacturing within that three hundred feet. But you would, but you would be allowed to develop office and similar type uses. So again, that was built in to protect, protect the existing phase five neighborhood that was just to the south of Charles. The other example I'd like to highlight was a more recent compass data centers. And this development's going in right there at Bullard and Yuma. Just east of the Bullard Wash, and you have an existing residential development on the west side of the Wash. So what you have is the Wash, which is about three hundred feet of separation. And then the developer also incorporated another hundred foot wide buffer before they started their development. So you're looking at about at least four hundred feet of buffer between existing residential. And a proposed data centers to go in in. And so. I just wanted to bring up those two examples that we do have. Areas where we do have industrial next to residential. But what I'd like to point out is that we, they were adequately buffered with several hundred feet of buffer and separation and landscaping and trees in between them. That would create more of that compatibility between those two dissimilar uses. And looking at further down at the valuation criteria for. We looked at Luke Air Force Base, Phoenix Goodyear Airport, providing our notice to future purchasers and tenants. Demand for uses, we touched on this with the market analysis. And again, the takeaway here, I believe, is that that study showed that the city has. An adequate supply of land to meet the demand for industrial development within the city. Six and seven, what we're looking at is public services and fiscal impacts. You probably noticed in the stipulations attached. That developer would be required to do all infrastructure improvements, take care. Of all needed easements, anything needed to provide services and infrastructure to the stock, they would be responsible for those. And then general public concerns, I think as of this, we do have one inquiry received, which will be discussed later. But then moving on to nine and ten with nine. Obviously, they would be required to adhere to all development standards. We'd also ask that if any development occurs, that it adhered to the stipulations that are proposed in the ordinance that was attached to this item. Then other factors. Staff would not approve the deviations to the landscape buffers. However, we do recommend that the deviation for height. We do feel that that can be acceptable, but more on a tiered approach. Where we have the higher buildings adjacent to the freeway and heights decrease as you approach the south property land line and those existing residences. And just wanted to, in our recommendation, offer that if the commission does desire to recommend approval. We'd ask you to include the stipulations in that ordinance. We believe those stipulations help address the. Requirement for general plan consistency and area compatibility. And I'm going to just go over a few of those stipulations that I believe should be included with any approval. We just talked about the height, maximum height of one hundred and fifty feet. That's okay, but it should be limited to the encouraged by the general plan. The commercial, the office, the hospitality, the employment type uses. The light industrial uses, we believe could. Go to a limited height of seventy feet, except within three hundred feet of the south property line. Where in looking at the next stipulation, we would like it to remain at fifty feet. And that fifty feet is the standard height allowed in the I one zoning district. So staff is not imposing any restriction on height, we're just saying that additional height is not warranted. So we believe within three hundred feet, the height should stay as allow currently allowed in the I one district. And we again, we believe that models, so some of the previous examples we looked at, especially with P V three oh three. Where we have reduced, where we have small lower heights adjacent to residential. We're also recommending that dock doors and storage loading areas, if they're going to front the south property line. Then we would like a hundred foot wide landscape buffer provided along that south property line. And just want to show these images just for heights, we believe that fifty feet is more than adequate. As we can see, a lot of the buildings within the Goodyear have developed in accordance with those heights. And just for references purposes, just want to point out that seventy feet is pretty tall. I mean, these are ninety feet for the silos for Fairlife that are going in. Staff would not like to see anything taller, especially adjacent to that south property line. So while adjacent to the freeways is appropriate, we'd like the heights to be lower adjacent to the south property line. And then just again, just go stipulations, outdoor operations within three hundred feet of the south property line. We'd like those limited, we would like them not to occur between ten and six A M. We'd like all outdoor equipment to be screened, the parking lots to be screened. We would like the freeway landscape buffers and the setbacks along the public streets to remain at thirty feet to provide for that landscaping and buffering. And then the last two steps, just want to talk about the special use permit. We would like to address the remediation of the borrow pit through that process, the special use permit process. And also the last stipulation, it's a standard zoning ordinance requirement that requires development within two years of zoning approval. However, we did want to add that any remediation activities, substantial activities that occur. That those would also qualify to vest the zone. For this rezoning, it was a public, does require a public hearing process. So we did provide notice as required, the property was posted. Notice was placed in the newspaper, we also had mailings to surrounding property owners and stakeholders. We had it updated on our website and with all this note, I do believe we did have one in public inquiry. So just to summarize the recommendation, the staff recommendation is for denial. For those reasons as provided here in this presentation and as provided in the staff report. Or the commission can take action to approve. But if you do so, we would request that you do so with the draft stipulations that are in the attached ordinance. Mission may continue this item. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my portion of the presentation. The applicant is here and they do have a presentation for the commission that they would like to show.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate you going through that and your thoroughness on the issue. Before we move on to the applicant, I would ask, is there any commissioner that has a question for Steve at this time?
No.
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 Okay. Being that there's no questions from the commission at this time, let's go ahead and switch over to the applicant and their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
I can.
So I guess as a prescient matter, I'm hoping that I can have more than ten minutes here. Given that I am the last item on your agenda, and this is a pretty dense topic. I promise not to abuse that, but I hope it's okay if I go over that ten minute mark. Is that all right?
I would prefer that you keep it very, very close to the ten minutes as possible, because we do have other agenda items.
I will, I will do my best. So if I can, my name is Wendy Riddell with the law firm Barry Riddell, sixty seven fifty East Camelback. My pleasure to be here today on behalf of Innovation Center. So sitting with me in my conference room, by the way, at a very safe socially distant six feet. I have my client, they are seasoned local developers, Jim Fionn, really known as an expert of office in the area. And John Wurzler, really known as an expert of industrial in the area and really industrial projects within Goodyear. You can see the Lockheed Opus Nike Bimbo Bakery. They're also well capitalized with Keystone Equities out of New York. And we have partnered here with Butler Design Group, probably done the most office industrial retail developments within Goodyear. So quick look at the some odd thirty projects they have done within Goodyear, so very experienced. For this project. For the record, I don't have any dogs in my conference room, so that's not me. So. We're going to start here, I've got a lot to talk about, so I'm going to start with the history of the site and the site constraints. And the history of the site in a lot of ways actually constraints give some of these site constraints. So when people think of the Trotter Track, I've grown up here long enough, you think of it as this kind of iconic entertainment use. And it brings some nostalgia and frankly, has left everyone with a little bit of a hangover. Not realizing the reality is this has never been a successful entertainment site. So when you go back and look at the original development of the Trotter Track with a ten million dollar investment at the time. It'd be eighty four million dollars in today's dollars. And it was opened for a mere two seasons. It actually bankrupted the Trotter Track, it bankrupted its sister in New York, and it was a failure. And in large part, ironically, for many of the reasons that we don't think this site could be a entertainment site today. Because of the very difficult access associated with this site. We also go back and look in the early seventies, a large portion of this site was used to construct I ten. Actually fifty four acres with twenty five feet deep on average, creating a huge borrow pit out there. That is an impediment to development that has to be addressed, very expensive to develop. We also fast forward to the nineties when the Rolls family actually purchased this site. And they rezoned it to P A D for an R V resort and golf course. I find it, I guess, a little bit interesting when the staff report and even in the presentation today. They refer to those fifteen hundred home sites or residential sites. I want to make sure this commission clearly understands the entitlements here allow fifteen hundred R V or mobile home sites. Those are the fifteen hundred sites that are entitled today. And you have a good idea what that looks like, because that's precisely what's entitled and what's developed between Van Buren on this site and the canal. So if you go down there, those are the existing entitlements, that's what vests the mobile home and R V park entitlements. This isn't residential, this is overnight R V uses, mini storage, R V storage, this R V uses. Fast forward a little bit more, in twenty seventeen, the Trotter Track had really become a problem for the community. There's countless stories on the web of people being out there, of falling down elevator shafts, creating problems. So the Rolls, really in discussions with the city, took it upon themselves at quite a significant expense to demolish the track. For one point eight million dollars. And it's interesting when you look at this site, if you look at Google Earth, and we're all such Google Earth junkies these days. You think this is an incredibly valuable piece of real estate, it's at the confluence of two freeways. It must have amazing visibility access, this is incredible. But I would challenge you to actually try to get to the site. I would challenge you to drive to the site, because if you're coming from downtown Phoenix, you better know to get off at Saraval. More than two, two and a half miles before the site. If you're coming down the three oh three, you either have to know to get off at Thomas Road. Or you have to go all the way down to Yuma and then kind of make this circuitous route there. It's very, very difficult, this is the primary problem with the site, very difficult access. When you're leaving the site, anyone leaving has to be willing to use, first of all, a signal. That would have to involve some remediation of the pit to be developed. But then be going on if you're headed north or you're headed east on off ramps, again, for more than two miles, very challenging access. And then when you get down and you drill down and you look at Citrus Road, this is the condition today. We pulled this picture off Google Earth, we didn't contrive this, this is a two lane rural road. There are significant upfront infrastructure costs associated to be able to develop this property. So I want to talk a little bit about consistency with the general plan. And essentially, we have a fundamental land use disagreement here with staff. But I want to let you know that I think very highly of staff. And as I, as I go through this presentation, I have the utmost respect. I just think we have a fundamental disagreement here and different motivations as we look at this. So staff mentioned business and commerce designation of the general plan. That standard thirty seven, straight out of the general plan, page one twenty five, you see Snyder's. Light industrial uses warehousing or distribution are appropriate throughout. Your general plan drills down a little bit further and actually gives you the correlation of the appropriate zoning uses, C two, I one, P A D. Precisely what we're seeking here. So staff also spent a good deal of time talking about the growth area or the transit corridor or the job corridor. And the first thing I would tell you, when you look at the map, we're not in it. You can see here, we're not in that growth corridor, we're not in that job corridor. And you also know that, because when you look at the language in the plan, it talks about wanting to use that corridor. To leverage where there's access and visibility that's inherent in that corridor to allow office or entertainment and hospitality. And that is precisely what's happened for the properties in the corridor. So when you look, when you start all the way over to the east, I'll flip through these very quickly, but that's exactly what's happened, you're in the corridor. Good access, good visibility, leveraged opportunity, you've got hospital, shopping centers, auto dealers. Move to the next intersection, again, that Snyder's symbol ought to look very familiar, straight from the general plan. But again, good access, good visibility, and you've got some good locations for those types of uses. You go to Astrea, again, it takes advantage of the good access, good visibility. And you see the exact type of uses contemplated by that portion of the general plan. You go to Saraval, Saraval has limited access. And as a result, you'll see the sites on the north are vacant, and you see single family residential on the south. It hasn't been able to take advantage of that, it doesn't have that same access. And then you look at our site, again, we're not even in the plan, but we also don't have direct access. And these type of employment uses or retail or entertainment uses that are being suggested rely on having good access to the site. And I get it, Google Earth is deceiving, but it's not how the site actually functions. I just wanted to bring up one other point too, because throughout this process, we've heard so much about staff's desire. The city's desire to have an entertainment type use here. Well, your general plan specifically calls out locations where there should be an entertainment type use, arts, culture, entertainment. They are within the village overlay, and we are not that plan.
Wendy.
Yes.
You've hit the ten minutes, so what I'm going to ask you is that you.
No, I'm sorry, I was, it was a two minute warning, I'm sorry.
So two minute warning, I'll give you a few extra minutes, but my suggestion, actually strong suggestion, is you jump forward to your project and start talking about that. And a little less of the back and forth and what the general plan says.
Certainly, I'll move right on, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as I mentioned, staff mentioned going on through this project in two years. It has never been suggested that we need to amend the general plan, I would suggest. never been suggested that we need to amend the general plan. I would suggest you can't have it both ways. So, then, moving on a little bit about our site, our effort to accommodate staff's position here. So, just to give you back, this has been over two years. We started in July of 2018 with a 130-acre site, guided by the general plan. Submitted a follow-up pre-op in November. We were asked to push the buildings to the south, smaller, larger buildings to the south, smaller buildings to the front. Staff encouraged us, city encouraged us, to take a look and develop a master plan for the entire project. We had, it was a challenge to do. There is fractured ownership here. It's assembled of 15 different parcels and three owners. It took quite a bit of negotiation, and we were able to bring them together. We view this as a huge opportunity for the city, and we're able to create a master plan with employment and entertainment uses, trying to find that win-win. Let the upfront infrastructure develop the industrial, so that there is the ability to bring in commercial and office later. But the city, I will say, took a very unusual step and wanted to do its own study. So, the city chose and hired, this is April of 2019, their own consultant, ESI. The city actually paid them nearly $17,000, and we paused the project for two months. And the results of that study came back, not surprising to us, that with proper access improvements, again, you remember what Citrus Road looked like, then maybe you could have industrial, mixed-use, destination entertainment, office, and multifamily. I think that's all the possibilities. And non-industrial uses may need financial assistance, would need a government subsidy. I'll, I'll move on quickly. So, the other thing we heard a great deal about was a desire for a water park here. I'm certain you guys read the paper and know that there is one that's now going in right up the street. And it was interesting to us, when we looked through the development agreement there, that with that site, there's actually $1 million in fees that Glendale waived. There's a tax abatement through a giblet, and much to my surprise, the city is actually providing all of the water. So, really quickly, when you compare that to our site-
Wendy, I'm going to ask you again. Strongly suggest, I suggest you get to your project and not this stuff, because otherwise I will, you know, end your time.
Certainly. So, Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to wrap up with the fundamentals about our reason we believe this is the best way to develop the site. I will tell you, when it comes to the actual stipulations and development and design standards, we still think that that's something we should have an opportunity to work out with staff. Friday was the first time we heard even the suggestion of a development agreement and all of the stipulations. So, I'd like to give you the reasons we think this is the appropriate land use, but then suggest to you, if you think that our land use is appropriate and worth exploring, and makes more sense than the existing entitlements, we also would be open to a continuance, directing staff to work with us on the details of those steps. So, if I'm not spending all of my time drilling down on the setbacks, I just want to make sure you understand that's why. But real quick, I'm just going to run through, so I don't test your patience too much, my kind of top 10 reasons, we think this land use is best, and then I will stop talking. So-
I would cut it down to five.
Okay. So, we believe there's demand for more industrial. I know there was discussion about that. I have Mr. Wurzler here. If there's questions, we're happy to answer it. I've already covered very complicated access, fractured ownership. We think there's an opportunity here. Upfront infrastructure costs that provide the ability to do the commercial and office later, a win-win for everybody. And it is the only way to ever actually get that borrow pit eventually filled, supported by the general plan. We have no neighborhood opposition. I think staff is going to tell you, there's a gentleman that called in today. Please know, the first time we ever spoke to that gentleman was yesterday. We ended up dictating what he wanted to say, because he was having some difficulty getting a hold of people, but other than that, we've got no relationship. It's never going to be an entertainment use. Your own market study tells you that. Best use for the site is not mobile homes. No other land uses are feasible here. So, again, in summing it up, this is my final slide. If you agree with us that the land use should be C2 and I1, we would request a continuance to work with staff on the stipulations and/or development agreement. We're not that far apart on the steps, I can tell you that. Just, we've only received them Friday and some 35 steps. If you don't agree, and you think the mobile home park or an RV is a better use here with the add, then certainly we understand and will proceed to counsel. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
No.
No.
This is Randy. I have a question.
Please go ahead, Commissioner Barnes.
So, can you tell me why the owner is choosing light industrial for this area instead of a higher rent use?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. We have been, I can tell you, the Rolls have been marketing this property for more than five-plus years, and it is, there's so much upfront infrastructure costs associated with it, also with the sort of challenging access and the need for a destination, that thought process is that there is industrial on the back portion of the site, that that brings in and pays for those upfront costs, and then open up the opportunity for there to be some of those other uses that would hopefully then come to the market, because to date, they have not. There has not been any interest, even after this being heavily marketed, or after us asking Economic Development Director to please bring us his uses, they have not shown up. So, we are responding to the market. The idea, again, get that upfront infrastructure in and provide other opportunities for the parcels that have better access directly on the street.
Commissioner Barnes, do you have any further questions, or does that answer yours?
Sorry, I got to push several buttons. Yeah, I was just curious. I, you know, from a layman's standpoint, I thought that they would want a higher rent use there, but, I mean, mixing it up, I think, is a good idea. That's my only question.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Is there any other questions from the commission, either for the applicant or staff?
Mr. Chairman, this is Christopher. Just to point out, we thought there might be some questions regarding, of that nature. So, should the commission have any questions regarding to that? I'd just point out that we have a representative from our engineering department, Steve Sinto, who could speak about that, should the, should you all have any questions. So, I just want to point that out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question for Steve and for staff, whether or not this land is really that inaccessible, and what would it take in the future to get it more accessible under the terms the staff is more comfortable with using?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. This is Steve Sinto. I, I don't know that I can give, I guess, a detailed answer to that. What I can say is that when site plans were developed for this site, at the point that a site plan would be developed for this site, we would be able to review at a more detailed level the traffic impacts, and would enforce the standards, county and city of Goodyear standards, for all-access locations. At, at the general level that we review zoning, currently, you know, there's a, I should put it up, preliminary plan, but it doesn't, it talks about, you know, decelanes and things of that nature that are required by the standards, but there's, there's no recommendation for ways to improve access other than those locations.
A little bit more specific of those locations, are they, if there were something that staff was more appropriate, that thought more appropriate to go in this position, would there be, for example, another exit planned in the future, or a better access?
We may be able to help answer that.
Hold on.
I'm, I'd like to hear, I guess I'm more interested in hearing a rebuttal by staff to the, to the statement that this is not accessible unless the Innovation Center is put here. I want to hear-
If I'm my Commissioner Kish, let me try and help you out, and you tell me if I'm on the right track. But bottom line, as you want to know, is, is it pretty much the opinion of the staff that the major access that makes the most sense to this property off of Citrus? And is it limited both on the north and the east side? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, more or less. Essentially, it, it made, what the applicant made it sound like is, they're the only way this is ever going to get developed, and this is going to get access to this area, or there will never be any access. I didn't know if staff or if there, if there was like, no, wait a minute, this is not the only way this could be accessed. There are other options here.
That being said, either Chris, or, excuse me, the engineer, if you want to answer that, and I understand that, you know, not based on this specific project, but is there access issues in general?
Mr. Chairman, I'll let Steve go first, and then follow up his comments with, with an additional comment from myself.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christopher. So, from an, from an engineering perspective, there was a traffic impact analysis submitted with the project, and it did contemplate various, like I said, preliminary or proposed access points. The city's jurisdiction is, is on Citrus, and we do have requirements for spacing of driveways on an arterial, with a minor arterial, which is what Citrus will be when fully built out. The Roosevelt, I believe, is the alignment, where the most likely place that there would be a signal. It's a collector to arterial. And there is the potential for other access points along Citrus, as long as they meet our minimum spacing requirements for safety, et cetera. The other, obviously with the Rid to the south, the Rid Canal to the south, there's no public access at this point in time. And along the freeway, that's ADOT's jurisdiction, and while we received a report that ADOT had reviewed preliminarily, all the permitting and approvals for access to the freeway or freeway frontage roads would be through ADOT.
Does that answer your questions? Or, excuse me, I'm sorry. Chris, go ahead. You were going to-
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission. As Ms. Riddell pointed out, and I think everybody agrees, there are infrastructure challenges to the project, and certainly in those previous pre-ops that Ms. Riddell had alluded to, there was discussions about that. And I even believe, at one point in time, her and her team had put together some preliminary cost estimates on what it would take to improve that infrastructure. I think everybody has the understanding that there needs to be improvements done. However, I would also say that same challenge was, and was present in West Goodyear, the residential portion of West Goodyear, all of the, is it 13? I'm going off the top of my head. I think 13 or 14 property owners who, who all worked together to help solve that through development agreements and things of that nature, to improve water sewer lines, streets, and things of that nature. And as a result, you know, projects like Las Briesas have been wildly successful. So, I, I think we all agree with Ms. Riddell that there are infrastructure challenges. Access is likely one of them, and, and we should certainly, if it's going to be some other land use other than industrial, I think there has to be a partnership between the city and, and the development community in order to, to make those requisite improvements. So, I just wanted to get on the record for that statement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioner Kish, does that answer your question, or do you seek further information?
No, that was helpful. I just needed a, with Chris saying that there was a previous issue with Las Briesas, or I just wanted to hear that these things can be overcome with just, you know, working together with different owners and those type of things. So, yes, thank you. That answered my question.
Is there any other questions from any of the commissioners, for either staff or the applicant? Okay. I'm not hearing any. So, are there any comments regarding this issue?
Yes, I have received one comment. I'll read it to the record. I'll be starting a timer for three minutes, and we'll read until it goes off. If I'm really, really close, I'll just try and finish it off.
Thank you.
I did it earlier, but I was talking pretty fast. All right. My name is Jeff Levy, a resident of Goodyear, living at 2162 North 165th Drive. I come from a family of industrial and commercial builders. We have been in the industry for 30 years. We've built several million square feet of industrial warehouse space and manufacturing in New York and Pennsylvania. I've been following the industry of commercial and industrial in Goodyear for about five years. I've also been following the old horse track for several years, since I'm out here, and was excited to learn that they were selling it and looking to develop it as commercial or industrial. Several years ago, the mayor had an article in the paper where the property was going for sale, and she mentioned she was excited to see it was going for commercial and industrial. She said this was the perfect spot for industry and commercial, because there wasn't much left along the 303 near Citrus and Route I-10. I've gone out several times to check the location of the track, and wholeheartedly believe there should be nothing more on this track other than industry and some retail to support it. Even a hotel would be good in that location with the retail and/or corporate office, or whatever someone wanted to build there. Now, I am totally disappointed with the mayor, council, and the planners in Goodyear, that they are deciding that this location is not a good location for warehouse and retail, and now seem to be refusing to rezone this piece of property, but instead are looking to put, excuse me, are looking to put more multifamily residential on this track. The mayor and the council are destroying Goodyear with all the apartments. Every commercial, every industrial tract is becoming multifamily, and they are crappy developments. Prisoners have some of these developments. In my recent work in the industry, I knew a buyer that was looking to locate a warehouse on Bullard and Van Buren, but before they got a chance to look at the property with the realtor, the city rezoned it to multifamily. Multifamily does not even belong on a corner with a substation right across the street, managed data center, managed data systems going in across the street, and several large warehouses, and several flex buildings right next door. I discussed this with a lot of residents in Goodyear, and people are really getting upset with the mayor and council here, taking a lot of our commercial and industrial land and rezoning it to multifamily. The mayor and council have betrayed the residents of Goodyear and sold out to a developer of the new civic center. There were 47 acres planned for office development, but the city approved rezoning to multifamily in exchange for land for their municipal building. Glendale, Phoenix, Scottsdale, Gilbert, and Chandler are all begging to bring in industry. They don't turn away good proj, good projects like Goodyear. Glendale just annexed 600 acres to build a huge industrial park and economic driver for the city. Why is Goodyear the only city that tries to turn a developer away that wants to develop into industrial when there is such competition with other cities that want these uses? If you think that the residents of Goodyear aren't watching as you destroy their city, you are very wrong. We are praying that you make the right choice and approve this request for rezoning the site to commercial and industrial, because nothing else belongs on this property. I just made it. All right.
Thank you.
I'm trying to get it in there in three minutes.
I appreciate that. Well done. Okay. With that, I guess I will close the public hearing, since there's no further comments, and I will ask one last time if there is any questions or discussion points from any of the commissioners on this particular item.
I had a pointed discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Please go ahead, Commissioner Kish.
As a point of discussion, I've noticed a lot of light industrial going into Goodyear. We've just okayed light industrial, you know, more light industrial going towards the Cotton Lane Bridge. You know, more light industrial going towards the Cotton Lane Bridge. We have, according to that map, lots of yellow squares for light industrial. To add more seems on that particular spot like too much. And also, we don't, there will not be many other opportunities to have a 303 and an I-10 interchange ever in the future. This is our only chance to do something different with this property. Therefore, I'd say that we can do better than put in more light industrial and see one in this particular spot. That's my point of discussion. Thank you.
Commissioner, I have a comment.
Commissioner Allison?
So I absolutely would love to echo Commissioner Kish's sentiment. As a resident of Palm Valley Phase Five, we are surrounded by industrial. Obviously, we understand that that is something that's necessary to save Luke and we're willing to make that sacrifice. However, doing that, if I were a resident in the residential neighborhood of Canyon Trails that's due south of Van Buren, I wouldn't be real happy with industrial or light industrial there as well. I think there are, if this applicant obviously is not willing or able to find the correct people to build on that location that's conducive to the city as an entertainment district, then maybe we should find somebody else.
Any other comments or thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, as Alyssa alluded to in that email that she read, she said that, or the writer of that email said that the city is getting upset because it's becoming a city of apartments. Well, also, I have heard that people are getting upset because it's becoming a city of warehouses. That's my point.
Well taken. Is there any other?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Clymer?
Well, of course, what we need now is that we either have to agree with having the project go forward or we agree with the staff that is denied or agree with the staff that can go forward with stipulations. And we had an opportunity to get together in executive session. Should we do that? Is there any thought about doing that?
Commissioner Clymer, yes, the opportunity for executive session is on the table, but remember it's restricted to legal liability and those types of questions, not necessarily this open discussion that we're having now that that cannot take place. So I think that you missed an option there. And there is an option of continuation where staff and the applicant can continue to try and hash it out. I hear a lot of what people are saying and I don't live far from their piece of property. I am very well aware of the access constraints. I understand a desire for something different, but I'm not 100% convinced that that a project that is different from the general plan is completely out of the picture. I think there could be further discussion. It is very well isolated now between the IRD Canal, the freeway, and mind you, the prison isn't very far away. So it is a difficult property. I think just in general moving forward, whatever someone decides to do it. But I think that there could be value in continuing possible discussions and that's just merely my opinion. So. Is there any other discussions or points from any other commission members?
I guess I have one other question then, Commissioner, for the staff. Do you feel it's worth the continuance and worth continuing to talk if you are close to points? And maybe the developer is willing to make concessions. Do you feel it's worth a continuance?
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Christopher. If I may answer that question, I think we would be happy to continue and have some additional dialogue with the applicant. If that's the commission's desire, we're certainly always open to working with people. I think Ms. Riddell and her team with the alternate recommendation that Steve had, Steve has prepared and explained to the commission. If you chose to recommend approval with those stipulations, I think that is a place where we can 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 work to and we would certainly be happy to have additional time to work with the applicant to see if we can be successful.
It's a good answer, Chris. Any other comments from the commissioners?
No. If I had one further point of discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Please, Commissioner Kish.
The applicant, I felt, did not show a a vision for this area, more or less just had, you know, and a passive argument with staff. That's how it felt. If I were seeing, if I were looking at a vision and a this area would be developed in this particular way and this beautiful area, then I might say, well, there might be something there, but they didn't take the time to do that. They simply just basically stated all the ways that they should be able to put commercial and light industrial there. And the only picture I saw was some giant tubes and a sign. So I, I don't believe that they put forward a good enough statement to even have a continuance. But that is just my first point of view.
And as a, as a counterpoint, I would have to agree with some of your comments on that, which would lead me to believe that maybe some continuing. I'm putting some of that stuff aside and focusing on the project. We may come to some agreement, but again, that's simply my opinion as well. So any other further discussion from any of the commission members?
No.
Okay, with that, I guess I will entertain a motion from the commission regarding this agenda item and there are several different paths that we can take. So we'll leave it up to the make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we deny this current application for in light industrial and commercial development longer 303 and I-10.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Steiner to not approve the rezoning from PAD and Ag to the PAD for the Innovation Center. Is there any discussion?
No.
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 Okay. Alyssa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
No.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
No.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Barnes?
No.
Chairman Bray?
No.
Motion does not pass.
So the motion to deny the applicant has failed. Therefore, the floor is open again for another motion. If I'm correct, is that right, Chris, staff?
Yes, sir. I'll just seek concurrence on that from our deputy city attorney, Sarah Chilton, but I believe that's an accurate statement.
Yes, that's an accurate statement. Since that motion failed, you can still move forward with either continuing, continuing it or moving forward with a motion to approve subject to the stipulations.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue forward with this procedure of discussion.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Barnes to continue discussions with the applicant on this particular item. Did I capture that right, Commissioner Clymer?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
No.
No.
Chairman, if I may, I'm sorry, this is Katie.
Please, Katie.
Can I make a recommendation that if you're moving to continue, that you do so to a date specific? And our next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is October 14th.
Okay, that. Then I meant my motion to include could be done by the next planning zoning commission meeting to be able to be placed on the agenda.
You're, so basically October 14th, is that correct?
Yes.
If I, if I might, before we solidify that, Katie and Chris, and I guess Steve is probably the main planner on this, is that a sufficient amount of time? Do we, do you feel that you can have fruitful negotiations to come to some sort of an agreement or conclusion?
That's an excellent question, Mr. Chairman. And I fully agree with continuing this to a date certain. I think that provides certainty for the applicant and a bookends it, allows us to do any notice that may need to be done. So I, but I, I think maybe if we could. Sorry, I'm looking here.
When's the meeting in November?
Mr. Chair, I might have a suggestion as well.
Just a minute, Wendy.
Alyssa, do you know when the meeting in November is?
Yes, sorry, November 4th.
It's not pulling up on my phone here, November 4th. So I think November 4th, we would either have things worked out or be back before you with a or be back before you for a recommendation to council.
Okay, I appreciate that feedback, Chris. Wendy, quickly, please, does that work for you and your clients?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we can make that work. I was just going to suggest the October date and then we continue if we're not making progress, but whatever you elect to do, that's fine.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I may, this is Christopher. Instead of going through the the effort of putting it on the agenda and so on and so forth, I think just postponing it until November the 4th gives us time to either come to an agreement or not, one of the two.
Okay. That being said, thank you, Chris. Thank you, Wendy. Commissioner Clymer, would you do a friendly amendment to postpone or continue this item to the November 4th? Meeting to allow staff and the applicant to continue to work out, work on disagreements?
That's agreeable, yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Barnes, are you okay with to continue seconding that friendly amendment?
Yeah, my second stance.
Okay, thank you. So the motion before you is to continue this item to the November 4th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to allow staff and the applicant to continue to work out disagreements. Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and ask Alyssa to call for the vote.
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
No.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Barnes?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Alyssa. Thank you to the applicant for getting, I appreciate that. We will move on to agenda item number six, and this is the multifamily residential design guidelines. And Katie will be presenting on those guidelines.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So you might remember a couple of months ago, we brought forth a zoning ordinance text amendment regarding the MF 12 zoning category, which is the single-family rental type projects. This is a companion piece to that. It's an amendment to the city's design guidelines. The design guidelines differ in the zoning ordinance in that they pertain more to the architecture, landscaping and site design of projects. And so we're catching this up with the zoning ordinance text amendment. So what we're doing is creating a specific, specific design guidelines for this product type because it is so unique. It is being amended into the multifamily design guideline standards. These projects will need to adhere to all the other multifamily standards. And a lot of those standards relate to the design of clubhouses and open spaces, the design of parking lots, entry features, those kinds of things that are similar to these type of developments, even though these are a single-family unit rather than apartment buildings that might have six to 12 units within them. So the first part of these design guidelines relates to the architecture of the individual buildings. And this is where these differ than the multifamily. Because these are individual units, they relate in some ways more closely to our single-family standards. So what we've done is added requirements that these develops need to, these types of developments need to provide at least two elevation styles. And of each of those elevation styles, there need to be three alternative color schemes. And the purpose of that is to provide architectural diversity within a specific development. This does differ than our single-family requirements. In single-family subdivisions, we require three elevation styles. And sometimes we encourage more if it's in a particularly large residential development. The example picture on this screen is a single elevation style, but it's showing the three alternative color schemes. We also require roofline variations. And then there are multiple standards that are similar to our single-family developments such as the entryway needs to be the focal point of the home. We require popouts around the windows and the doors. We encourage the use of stone and brick in the architecture. Some of those guidelines that are what, you know, make the homes in Goodyear look so nice. This is another example of a development that is working on building in Goodyear. And this is an example of three different elevation styles. So you can see the architecture of these three buildings are very different. And even the two buildings on the left here, you can see we would count those as different, even though they have sort of a similar craftsman style. You can see they have different rooflines that they've employed, so they look different enough that we would accept that as two different elevations. The next topic is perimeter lots. Now that we've had a few of these developments gone, come, that have been built in Goodyear as well as neighboring communities, one of the things we've heard is that they can look very monotonous from the roadway, just one after another. Now, in the defense of some of these developments, such as this picture you see before you, the landscaping isn't in, which does make that look more pronounced of cookie-cutter little buildings. However, we have also added some, some design guidelines to help address this. So, we require that the height and mass does need to be variable in these, let me just go back, this picture you can see here, you know, they have, all have the same, you know, they have this stone vertical element, and then a horizontal element, you can see they're pretty much the same building, although there's a little bit variation in the color, they all have the same exact roofline and the same architectural elements. What we require now is that they need to use height and massing to make the buildings look different, there need to be varied rooflines between the different buildings, and they also have to be placed that way. So, basically, at least along the perimeter street, you can't have a building of the same elevation and color right next to each other, basically, so that you avoid that cookie-cutter look. We also require building separation of 15 feet between these buildings when they're on the perimeter. Inside the development, they can go as close as 10 feet, but again, to try and give it a better look on the outside, we required a 15-foot separation. The next topic is delving more into building separation, as I just said, the separation between buildings will be 10 feet, but the other thing I wanted to point out that we've included, this is two examples of the same development, the one on the left is when they first came in, and you can see some of these units, kind of on the right of the picture, are really buried, there's units completely surrounding them. We added a regulation that requires basically one side of a building to be open to open space, even the parking lot, so that more natural light, so you can see on the right, they did revise that, and they added a trail down the middle, so some of those buildings were separated. So, basically, we, we want to not have the developments where they're just burying units, and that some of those units could possibly be quite dark, with not a lot of natural air and light coming into them. And again, I just want to reiterate, we do also require pedestrian connections, trails, similar requirements that we require for multifamily about central amenities, perimeter walls, blocking, we require similar massing and height to neighboring developments. There have been no public input received on these, on the proposed design guideline changes, and staff recommends approval. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Katie, are there any questions for Katie at this time?
No.
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 Good job, Katie, I mean, that's good information, was there a question?
Did you open the public hearing?
Oh, open the public hearing.
Thank you.
I always forget which one they are. That being said, Alyssa, do you have any comments? Or emails?
I have not received any comments or emails.
Okay. Seeing none, hearing none, let's go ahead and take a motion on Agenda Item Number Six, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we- Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve 2020-2020-7029, Multifamily Residential Design Guidelines.
Second.
If you could close the hearing.
It is, oh, I'm closing the hearing, no more public hearing, and it has been moved by Commissioner Maloney, seconded by Commissioner Barnes, to approve the Multifamily Residential Design Guidelines, 2020-7029. Is there any discussion?
No.
No.
Alyssa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Barnes?
Okay, now I'm going to mute it, aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Alyssa. On to Agenda Item Number Seven, this is simply an introduction, to introduce the need for election of officers, and establish an election, basically, to the meetings, and all of a sudden, you got to elect, and so, staff practice to my attention, I thought we should at least throw it out now, and set a date, with your permission, set a date of October 14th to do the official election, that way, you guys all have time to form a coup against me and throw me out. But, with that, I'll ask, Chris or Katie, is there anything you need to add there, or do you want an official motion, or is that good enough?
I, I think, just for the record, since it was an agenda item, Mr. Chairman, if we could just have an official motion to set that, that would be helpful for record-keeping. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I think October 14th is, I mean, it gives us a month if somebody wants to take on a position or whatever, you know, you guys can talk amongst yourselves, however, but if we get a motion to, to set that date, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that October 14th will be the date of our election of officers for the Commission.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Maloney, to set the election of officers for October 14th, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Is there any discussion?
No.
No.
All right, Alyssa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Barnes?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, on to staff communication, Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just to give you a quick update here, as you know, we, and thank you for attending the special meeting on August 26th, at that meeting, the Commission considered the preliminary plat for Australia 11H, which is in the Lucero community, created about 70, excuse me, 67 to 70 lots or so, by the Star Tower, that went to the council on September 14th and was approved. You also may remember, Katie delivered an excellent presentation on the redevelopment plan, that we had some robust conversation about, and that hearing, that public hearing is set for the City Council to consider that one on September 28th. So, council hasn't yet heard or voted on that one, but when they do, we'll give you an update at our October meeting. I'm going to pass it over, Katie, did you want to talk about the general plan amendment meeting? I'm sorry, I'm putting her on the spot.
Thank you. So, we have, we are going to be reaching out to you to schedule another special meeting. In, we're looking at either October 21st or October 28th, the reason being is we have another major general plan amendment working through the system. If you remember last year, when a major general plan amendment is considered, we have to hold two public hearings, one of those public hearings has to be off-site. We were moving forward with the thought that we've been having our meetings electronically, and that was going to serve as our off-site meeting, because we're holding them electronically. However, City Council has now moved to Phase Two, what we're, what we call Phase Two of our COVID plan, and City Council meetings have been back up to the public, and because City Council meetings have opened to the public, we are going to hold our next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting back in the City Council chambers, and hold that open to the public, and since we're going to have those meetings in person, that means we do have to have that physical off-site meeting. So, again, I apologize for the last minute, another addition of a meeting, we are quickly responding to COVID, so we appreciate all of your patience. We are going to plan the meeting, so that will be the only item on the meeting, right now, we're thinking about having it at our public, there's a large conference room at our Public Works facility, and so, we think we'll be able to fit in there, if we just have this one item, and be able to practice social distancing in that room. So, again, we will be reaching out to you to see who is available on those dates, to see, make sure we can have a quorum.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie, just one more thing, if I can, Mr. Chairman, as Katie alluded to, the city is pivoting toward in our reopening plan, Phase Two, according to our city's documents, which includes, as Katie mentioned, the City Council meeting went back open to the public on Monday, the 14th. This meeting was still closed, and electronic, obviously, since we're all doing this, because everything was advertised that way, and we didn't want to have to postpone this meeting in order to re-advertise. We understand and appreciate that the health and safety, welfare of our residents and our commissioners, and citizens and employees is paramount, and because of that, what we'll be doing is deploying very specific social distancing and safety precautions when these meetings are open to the public, there will be a limited number of people in the room, if we exceed a certain number, they'll wait in other rooms, and when their item is in front of the Commission, they would be allowed to come into, into the, into the council room. There'll also be social distancing between staff and, and the Commission as well, so, we, we feel like we have taken the appropriate CDC-recommended safety precautions, but at the same time, moving forward and reopening the meetings to the public, so I hope that makes sense. Again, as Katie illustrated, we really greatly appreciate your adaptability and support, I know this is a string of special meetings, it's nothing that we really want to ask you to do, but we appreciate your support and your willingness to serve the community, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something before we're done?
Please, Commissioner Barnes?
Two things, number one, on the election of new officers, am I correct to say that Patrick and I are not eligible? Is that, is that correct? It has to be one of you.
That's a great question, Mr. Barnes, or Vice Chairman Barnes, I don't know that to be true or false, Katie, do you know? I think, my, my gut reaction, without looking into the bylaws and so forth, is that as long as you're a Commission member, you're eligible to be an officer, but I could stand to be corrected, I'll defer if Katie knows anything, or Sarah.
I'd have to look at the bylaws as well, that's my recollection, that you could be officers until you are off the Commission, however, I think that Vice Chair Barnes is getting at the point, there is an opportunity here for new Chair and Vice Chair to start working while we have our former, you know, potentially former Chairs here to advise and mentor, so, whatever the Commission decides to do.
So, if we vote in October, do the new officers take effect in January, is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman Barnes, typically, they go into effect that night, there's, it's not a, we don't have a waiting period.
Okay. I, the reason I say it is I know Patrick and I are at the end of our terms, now, we will continue to serve until a replacement is found, but if you elect us, there's a chance that we will not make it all the way through the year. That's all I wanted to ask about, the other thing I wanted to say, just as a point of interest to the Commission, one of the real estate developers that I work with in my practice, who is a multifamily developer around the West, mentioned to me that they are investing heavily in the Phoenix Valley area, with multifamily properties, both buying and developing, because they think this is the biggest market for the next 10 years for growth, at least in their area of rental dwelling units. That could be good or bad news, depending on your perspective, but yeah, I thought it was an interesting point to bring to the Commission.
Back, back to the officer stuff real quick, I think, when, when our terms expire, though, I thought for some reason that it all lined up together, that it would have been, in September, we go on and off, and then the election of officers happened, I, I thought we had that all lined up, or is it offset somehow?
I thought we usually elected at the beginning of the new term in January, is that what we've done the past couple years?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commission, and Katie, please correct me if I have an incorrect recollection, I think that the, the date of the election has moved around a little bit, depending on a variety of different circumstances, and our crack Planning Commission Secretary Alyssa pointed out the other day, or the other week, that we needed to have elections for officers, so that's why we wanted to bring this up now, I don't think, I don't think it's been a, something that's been strictly adhered to in, in the past, for, for a variety of reasons, not pointing fingers or blame or anything, I just, I just think it's not been adhered to terribly strong.
I mean, in that case, I think it would be better to have the election in November or December, so that the members have time to actually be around each other and, and discuss it a little bit, in that case, I think next month might be a little soon.
Is there anybody that's dropping off of the Commission in January?
So, let's do that, let's do this, because we're kind of had that agenda item, we've made a motion, and I don't really want to go back, nor do I think we really can. Chris and Katie, would you do, would you give us a list of everybody's terms and where we're at, and when they, you know, when they either have to renew or go off, because I know that for Randy and I, Commissioner Barnes, we can't renew, because we've been here for way too long, and people are probably ready to get rid of us, but give us those months and dates, and then, as we look at that, possibly start to set up, you know, something different, where all of that starts to line up for, for everybody, so the, basically, the council is picking people, and we're not in some weird scenario where my term ends and we don't have a chairman, you have to go back into elections.
Yes, 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 sir, we'd be happy to do that, we can look at when those, when those terms officially end, again, as I think Katie pointed out, or, excuse me, as Vice Chairman Barnes pointed out, you, you do remain on the Commission until you're either, even if your term expires, until you're either replaced or resign, one of the two, and so, we'll, but we'll certainly get that information for you, no problem, and share it with the Commission, so excellent suggestion, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, any other comments from Commissioners? All right, the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be held on October 14th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. There being no further business to discuss, this meeting is adjourned.